Good evening, welcome everyone to the Village of Suffering Board of Trustees Meeting. Today is Monday, October 5th. It is now 7:00 PM. Would you all please enjoy me in a stand for the pledge while Julia leads us in the pledge. Julia?
Through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
And once again, let us remain standing and think about all our servicemen and women serving our great country. And of course, all of our first responders and our police officers that are here with us this evening. Thank you for your service. Thank you, may have a seat. Like to have a roll call vote. Trustee Albert.
Present.
Trustee Corrigan.
Present.
Trustee Barone.
Present.
Trustee Gerard.
Present.
Village Clerk Amy Paffenroth is here with us. Village Attorney Robert Magrino. And I believe Richard Glickel, Labor Council also. Next upcoming meetings.
Ed, I just have a quick question. Who's in the audience with you?
This is Lieutenant Lachlan and the two police officers that are being promoted.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for sharing that.
You're welcome. Workshop meeting is scheduled for Monday, October 26th, 2020. And a regular meeting of the Village Board of Trustees is scheduled for Monday, November 2nd at 7:00 PM.
Ed, I wanted to apologize for not calling this out at the workshop. Wanted to see if we could, we can move the November 2nd to the 9th?
Okay. Let's see.
It's okay with me.
The following Monday?
Yeah, the following Monday.
Okay. Trustees, you good with it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, if we can make note of that special change. Thank you. Next up, it's a very, very important evening here in the Village of Suffering. And it relates to the appointment of a suffering police chief. Lieutenant Andrew Lachlan. Lieutenant Andrew Lachlan's career in the Suffering Police Department is a true testament of policing. Lieutenant Lachlan's professionalism, attention to detail, and leadership are all attributes necessary to be an effective police chief. Lieutenant Lachlan possesses all of them, as I've witnessed over the last month or so. Along, along with a review of Lieutenant Lachlan's personnel file, which I might say is very impressive, very impressive, his advanced training in all areas of policing, in my opinion qualifies him to this extremely important role in the Suffering Police Department. Rising through the ranks from police officer to sergeant to lieutenant and now chief is a great accomplishment. I have received numerous recommendations on his behalf and on his ability to lead. These recommendations, some from the members of the Suffering Police Department and some from outside the Suffering Police Department and other areas of policing. It makes me proud to hear so many positive attributes about Lieutenant Lachlan and about his, about the Suffering Police Department. And at this time, as Mayor of the Village of Suffering, it is my honor and privilege to move this resolution to appoint Lieutenant Andrew Lachlan of the Suffering Police Department to Police Chief Provisional. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, trustee Corrigan. Do I have any discussion?
Congratulations.
Yes, congrats.
Yes.
Once again.
Welcome to your new adventure. We look forward to it.
So once again, I would like to congratulate you. In these last couple of weeks, you have shown true leadership in my eyes and into the, into the leadership of the Police Department. You're well deserving of this promotion. And you couldn't ask for a better person. So I congratulate you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we will now swear in Lieutenant Lachlan. The old freshman, congratulations. Okay, Chief, if you would like to proceed with your nomination.
At this time, it is my great pleasure to request that the Village Board appoints Police Officer Craig Yustin to the position of Police Sergeant effective October 4th, 2020. His promotion will fill a vacancy created by the retirement of Sergeant Michael Fennessy in August of this year. Sir Yustin, a lifelong resident of the Village of Suffering, he joined the Suffering Police Department in July of 2004 after serving with the NYPD. Officer Yustin has served in the capacity as a patrol officer, a dare officer, and is currently the Senior Evidence Custodian for the department and the department's IT officer. Officer Yustin has consistently gone above and beyond what is required as a patrol officer and in my opinion is very deserving of this promotion.
Thank you, Chief. Once again, I would like to extend my, my congratulations to Officer Yustin. Sorry, I have to keep taking my glasses off. With 16 years here in the Village of Suffering, which is extremely a long, great career that you have, utilizing your, your expertise in IT, being a dare officer, and now, you know, taking, monitoring the evidence control room. It is my pleasure also to move the appointment of Craig Yustin to Sergeant effective October 4th, 2020. Do I have a second?
Second, trustee Albert.
Second, trustee Albert. Have any discussion? Sergeant Yustin, if you'd like to come on up. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Congratulations.
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 Same.
Well deserved.
Okay, Chief.
At this time, it is my great pleasure to request that the Village Board appoints Police Officer Daniel Kieran to the position of Police Sergeant effective October 5th, 2020. His promotion will fill a vacancy created by the retirement of Sergeant Gertrude Smith in August of this year. Officer Kieran is also a lifelong resident of the Village of Suffering and joined the Suffering Police Department in August of 2010 after graduating from the Rockland County Police Academy. Officer Kieran has served in the capacity as a patrol officer and is currently one of our senior patrolmen and the senior dare officer. Officer Kieran was selected to be one of our field training officers and has participated in training many of the officers currently working in our agency. In my opinion, Officer Kieran is very deserving of this promotion.
Very well. Chief, thank you very much. Lifelong resident also, Officer Sergeant Kieran, 10 years of experience here in the Suffering Police Department. Great dedication and service to the Village of Suffering. He's a senior patrol officer now. He'll be a junior sergeant now, I guess. Right? Dare officer and the, the FTO, the Field Training Officer is a, a quality of, of leadership that is needed in police departments to train young officers coming in. So this is a great benefit that we have here in the Village of an FTO now becoming a, a sergeant. So at this time, I would like to move the appointment of Daniel Kieran to Sergeant effective October 5th, 2020. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, trustee Corrigan. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Sergeant Kieran, if you will, step up and be sworn in. Good job, guys. Good job, all of you. Excellent. Suffering Police Department is in great hands now with Chief Lachlan. Yes, Chief.
At this time, we would like to request that the Village Board nominates full-time dispatcher Thomas Conklin to the position of full-time dispatcher cad pending clearance from the Rockland County Department of Personnel. This nomination will fill a vacancy created by the retirement of dispatcher Derek Valentine in April of this year. Dispatcher Conklin is 18 and has demonstrated a common professional demeanor throughout his employment. It is my pleasure to recommend him for this nomination.
Thank you, Chief. I have the resolution here authorizing the nomination of Thomas Conklin as dispatcher full-time. Be resolved. Board of Trustees hereby nominates Thomas Conklin to the position of dispatcher full-time pending final certification and qualifications by Rockland County Department of Personnel. Do I have a?
Motion, trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert, do I have a second?
Second, trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone. Any further discussion? Good. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Okay. Thank you.
At this time, I would ask the Village Board to accept the resignation of Police Officer John Kieran effective September 10th, 2020. Police Officer Kieran served the Village with integrity and professionalism. And though it is with regret, I ask the Board to accept his resignation and wish him luck in all of his future endeavors.
Now, the resolution accepting the resignation of John Kieran, Police Officer Part-Time, effective September 10th, 2020. Do I have a motion?
Motion, trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, do I have a second?
Second, Gerard.
Second, trustee Gerard. On the discussion. I would like, I would like to say thank you to, to officers. John Kieran for his dedicated service, not only here to the Village of Suffering, but to the Village Spring Valley. Good luck in your next career. Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
All in favor of accepting the resignation?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? Am I having a problem with the internet connection?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everyone else is clear.
Is it a lag?
Yeah, you have like a lag.
Going in and out.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
I would like to say thank you for Officer Kieran doing everything he did for this village for as long as he did. Thank you so much, and I do wish you the best.
Yes, thank you as well. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Let me just take, let me take two minutes. You're done, right? You're complete. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, we're going to skip over to the Police Chief's update. Chief, yes.
On the 5th of September, the Police Department responded to 519 calls for service. Call types range from suspicious persons, motor vehicle accidents, disorderly persons, medical emergencies, welfare checks, fraud and harassment reports, burglar and fire alarms, emotionally disturbed persons, intoxicated persons, hazardous conditions, animal complaints, runaway juveniles, domestic disputes, and a variety of other routine calls for service. We made several arrests charging multiple individuals with bargaining, multiple counts of criminal mischief, harassment, endangering the welfare of a child, criminal contempt in the first degree, aggravated driving while intoxicated, strangulation in the second degree, and assault in the third degree. During the month of September, we conducted two targeted speed enforcement studies. First study was initiated based off a petition to the Village Board from residents of Lower Washington Avenue requesting the Village Board install stop signs or speed bumps between Boulevard and Orange Avenue to slow down speeding traffic. September 14th and September 22nd, we conducted 16 different speed enforcement details at this location. Although we did issue a few summonses for speeding, the overall data we compiled does not support the assertion that there is a particular speeding problem in the area. During this detail, the speed of over 200 vehicles was measured and captured by a laser speed measuring device. The high speed recorded was 38 miles an hour, but the majority of the vehicles were traveling between 20 and 30 miles an hour. Yeah, the speed for vehicles measured during this detail was 25.3 miles per hour, and the posted speed limit for this location is 25 miles an hour. In addition, according to the U.S. Department of Transportation, stop signs should not be used for speed control. The DOT's position is based off the fact that many studies have been conducted on the subject and have shown that stop signs are not an effective measure for controlling or reducing mid-block speeds. In fact, the overuse of stop signs may cause drivers to carelessly stop at the stop signs that are installed. One study they cite actually showed that placing stop signs along the street may actually increase this peak speed of vehicles because motorists tend to increase their speed between stop signs to regain the time spent at the stop signs. Based on this information, it is my recommendation to the Board that there is not a particular , there's a problem with speeding vehicles in this area and that additional traffic control measures are not warranted at this location. The Police Department will however periodically monitor the area continue to conduct traffic enforcement details as needed. The second traffic enforcement study that we conducted was after receiving a complaint from a resident of Parkside Drive in the area of the Foxhole Pond in regard to speeding vehicles. Between September 25th and September 27th, we conducted six speed enforcement details at this location. The speed of 91 vehicles were measured during this detail. The average speed for the vehicles measured was 24.85 miles an hour. Posted speed limit for this area is 25 miles an hour. Again, the data capture does not indicate that there is a particular speeding problem at that location, but we will continue to periodically conduct traffic enforcement details to ensure compliance. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. If you would remain standing there and have your, invite Mrs. Lachlan up to pin your new shield on. Now it's official. Thank you. Thank you very much. Everybody's clapping. Yeah, we're gonna, we're just gonna run, take a five-minute break and we'll come right back. Is that okay with everyone, with the Board?
Yeah.
Less than five minutes.
Whatever you need, Mayor.
All right, thank you. I'll be right back.
Welcome back.
Welcome back. Sorry for the delay there. Do we have everybody? I think we're waiting for trustee Corrigan.
Sorry, tad bit of technical, technical difficulties.
Okay then. So it is now 7:25. Need a motion to open up the continuation of the September 8th public hearing to consider a special permit for a private club at 62 Lafayette Avenue. Do I have a motion?
Motion, trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, do I have a second?
Second, trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Magrino.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Board. So I'm assuming there's no one here from the applicant for 75 Beacon Partners LLC. If you are, please raise your hand. I spoke with Jay Greenwell, who is their surveyor slash planner, the one who helped them, the professional who helped them with the application. He's not sure what's going on. As you recall, there were some issues with the county health department. And my understanding from my discussions with him is that at this point, they're not pursuing the special permit. I have not received anything from them regarding that to withdraw. So what I'm going to recommend is that the Board close the public hearing to deny the special permit due to inactivity by the applicant without prejudice, meaning they could certainly come back. Just the fact that we haven't received anything from them, haven't heard anything from them. You know, and the reason I'm suggesting deny is because the COV requires either an approval, approval of modifications or denial, otherwise there's a it's an automatic approval. So that's why I'd recommend, again, unless somebody has something to say, unless someone from 475 Beacon Partners is here, that the Board close it and deny it due to inactivity by the applicant without prejudice.
Yes, it makes a lot of sense to me as well.
Okay, is there any, is there anyone here from 475 Beacon Partners? Okay. Motion to close the public hearing?
Motion Gerard.
Motion Gerard. Second?
Second, Corrigan.
Second, Corrigan. All in favor?
I have a question actually before we.
On the discussion?
On the discussion. So if they, like, they haven't shown up at any of our meetings, but if they were to figure out whatever it is that they need to do to continue this, would they be able to reopen this hearing or is it just, that's the end, it's done?
Well, we, we would probably have them, have the hearing re-noticed and, and look at their plans. I would assume the plans would change.
I see.
That's why I'm saying, you know, without prejudice, it's not, frankly, it's not on the merits. It's due to inactivity.
Yeah, no, I understand that completely. I just wasn't sure what the procedure would be if they then reappear later. Is it like, yeah, I don't know how that works. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, now we can take a vote.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Okay, motion passes. Motion to deny due to inactivity.
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice, excuse me.
Motion Gerard.
Motion Gerard. Second?
Second.
Corrigan.
Corrigan. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? No, motion passes. Okay. Next up is the Fire Department Chief Koffa.
Good evening, everybody. How are you?
Good.
Good, how are you?
Not too bad. Just a few things on the agenda this evening. The first is the, a motion to accept Robert's son as an under 18 member of the volunteer hose company.
Okay, so do, do I have a motion to accept Robert's son as an, as an under 18 member of the hose company?
Motion, Corrigan.
Motion, Corrigan. Second?
Second, Barone.
Second, Barone. Any discussion?
I think it's great that every single meeting, we have somebody that wants to join our fire department. That is just amazing, Jeremy. Thank you.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? No. Next, Chief.
Resolution authorizing the volunteer hose company to hold a car wash fundraiser at the Washington Avenue Firehouse on October 25th with a rain date of November 1st.
Okay, I have the resolution authorizing the hose company to hold the car wash fundraiser October 25th. Do I have a motion?
Motion, trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert, do I have a second?
Second Gerard.
Second, Gerard. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, Chief.
Okay, we have a resolution authorizing an RFP for the evaluation of the current fire department HVAC HVAC systems in both firehouses, along with a proposal for required upgrades. This will be done in conjunction with Charles Alwicky.
Okay, so I have the resolution authorizing your RFP, a request for proposal for the evaluation and upgrade of the fire department HVAC system. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan, do I have a second?
Second, trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert, any further discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, can you give us an idea of when you say required upgrades? What does that entail or what sort of things does that entail?
So we're trying to figure out what needs to be done. We're not, we're not really sure. We've had a couple people come in and give us different ideas of what needs to be done. So we're trying to get a better idea of what work needs to be done or what needs to be replaced or possibly fixed moving forward.
Okay, so, so it's still possible that repairs might be feasible rather than.
Correct.
Replacement.
Correct.
I see that as preferable if it's feasible, if it's going to be reliable.
Yes.
Not if it's not going to be reliable because you don't want to be down this road again in a year.
Exactly.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And lastly, we have a resolution amending the Service Award Program point system when special response rules are in effect during the COVID-19 pandemic. This was established by the Governor of New York allowing members to receive points, a certain amount of points during the pandemic when they were unable to respond to the firehouse.
Okay, so I have the resolution amending the Service Award Program point system when special response rules are in effect during the COVID-19 pandemic. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan, do I have a second?
Second, trustee Barone.
And trustee Barone. On the discussion. Chief, if I may ask, the number of points, how are we determining that?
That is to be determined by the Board. That is to be determined by the board.
Okay, what is your recommendation to the board?
My recommendation would be four points.
Four points?
That is taking into account aside of calls, the four drills that we would have monthly that we were unable to conduct at that time.
Okay, that makes sense. So on the discussion, we will have that from the effective date of adoption of special response rules to the effective date that such rules are all active volunteer firefighters in a village of suffering shall be awarded four points per month with such number of points prorated for periods less, of less than a completed month. Any further discussion?
This, this is the, this is the same amount that would be if they were doing the, the training and so forth that they would normally be doing, they would earn this amount.
Correct. Yes.
That makes sense. Yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose?
No.
Four, that would be four points in a reso.
That is all. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Chief.
Have a good evening.
Stay safe.
Thank you.
Ms. Kathy Mills, Culture and Recreation.
Good evening, everybody. Hope you can hear me this evening.
Yes, and see you.
It's nice to see you.
I was very afraid there for a minute. Changed over the laptops. So, good evening, everybody. How are you?
Good.
Good. So a couple of things that we have coming up. The continued chair exercise classes that we have at the gazebo, we're doing on Mondays and Wednesdays. Elaine has been running those classes. We've got a lot of happy seniors running chair exercise. We've got chair yoga at the gazebo and we have those on Tuesdays and Thursdays also at 10:00 AM. And then Nancy is doing Zoom yoga on Fridays at 10:00, so five days a week. We have exercises and socializations for our seniors. We have walking club at Yorkshire Park. Again, the DBW did some great signs up there, having people go around one way. So we know, people know to keep going, social distancing and to not walk against each other. We have it worked out so that it's four times, four and a half times around is 1.2 miles. So we know how much exercise, they know how much exercise they're getting when they walk around. So it's a great addition to the, to the village. We have up, coming up tomorrow outside the community center, flu shots. Our local Walgreens, our Armont Walgreens to be exact, is coming to the community center. They will be outside like they were last time between 10:00 AM and 5:00 PM. And this will be free flu shots. So they were originally going to be there from 9:00 to 4:00, but because a few people have asked for a later time, they are gonna be there from 10:00 to 5:00. For those of you that were there last time, it went very smooth and it was very crap, not crowded, I shouldn't, not saying crowded any time these days. It was very busy and they did over 175 flu shots. So we thank Walgreens for all that they do for us. They're really great to us. So if anyone needs a flu shot still, come over to the center between 10:00 and 5:00. On Wednesday, October 7th, we'll be coffee with the mayor at the gazebo and that will be at 11:30. We'll have some coffee, we'll have some snacks. Mayor Markounis will be able to talk to some residents, ask questions. They can ask questions of him, so it'll be a nice hour or two, depending on how many questions we've got. And it'll be set up, again, social distancing so people can enjoy being out and speaking with the mayor and talking and asking questions.
Oh, Kathy, I'm sorry. When is that again?
That's on Wednesday, Joe, at 11:30 at the gazebo.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome. And then we have this Saturday, we've got two great events. We have the Halloween window painting. It's a fantastic event. We've had it many years now. The Suffering Chamber of Commerce is partnering with us as always and they're giving out the prizes. And as I talked about in the very beginning of this, and we had a lot of great discussions about how to change our events for social distancing with kids. We are now going to have two children, two students per team, so that they can work together but not be, you know, right next to each other the whole time. So we are working very, very, you know, strongly making sure that we keep the kids social distance and safe. We have over 16 groups as part of it now. So we'll have 16 at least nice windows decorated for Halloween down in the village. So that will be starting at 10:00 AM and it goes until the kids are done, so probably around 11:30, 12 o'clock is when you'll see the nice, the nice pictures forming. So we're looking forward to that. And then Keep Rockin' Beautiful, we will have on Saturday, October 10th as well. So the window painting is from 10 to 12. Recreation staff is gonna turn it over and get ready for Keep Rockin' Beautiful. And that will be registering or signing up beforehand and then showing up at the community center where the teams will be able to, to go out, get their supplies and go to their teams. As I talked about last time, this is the same thing. You know, same type of situation. Keep Rockin' Beautiful is limiting the amount of people. So a lot of people have been known to sign up for this event, we're one of the largest in the county. But this year, every, every cleanup that's being done is, is limited to 50. So if anyone's interested, sign up soon because I have a feeling the numbers will fill up very quickly. But that's exciting. And again, to register for it, you, you register at keeprocklinbeautiful.org and they keep the numbers and they let me know who has signed up and then I take it from there and get the locations. On Wednesday, October 14th, the William Neely Sign Dedication will be happening and that will be at 11:00 AM down at the, we used to call Point Park. Now it's the William Neely Sign Dedication and it is also the Clifford Park, the David Clifford Park. So that'll be on the 14th at 11:00 AM. We still have our Halloween event, Sunday, October 25th. As I mentioned last time, we're still kind of figuring that out. We will get a great event together. We're still trying to get specifics. By next week, we'll know exactly what we're doing. We'll start promoting that. So Halloween is not finished in Suffering. We're continuing. We'll make it safe and happy for kids.
I can't do, I can't do three cancellations. I can't do three cancellations. Yeah, I can't.
I know. It's a tough, it's a strange year, but we're, we're getting through. And then November 3rd is Election Day at the Community Center in Leo Leiden. Those are two locations that they will be voting done at the center and Leo Leiden.
And then also the library too, right?
Yes, I'm sorry, the library is for a village, we, I, I was thinking about our facilities, but absolutely. My location is actually the library too. So any current locations that were scheduled and then the two village locations are the center and Leo Leiden. So yes, I don't want to knock out the library.
That's one to clarify.
Yes, thank you, Steve.
Because most of the village can't vote if they're out.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I don't want to be blamed for cutting off a location.
And we're only kidding, Kathy, trust me.
And then jumping into November, Veterans Day is coming up. We'll have a ceremony at 11:00 AM and that's to be determined. Again, we're trying to work on different, you know, exactly where a location, how large it will be. I'm working with Mike Burns with the American Legion, so we'll, we'll come up with a location and a time. The time will be 11:00, location to be determined. So that's it for events coming up. We, the last thing that I have on my agenda item is discussion about the community center. As you know, the weather is changing now. We've done fabulous programs outside for the last couple of months and they've been flourishing. So we would love to continue those programs for village residents. We're hoping that we can go back into the community center. It seemed very positive at the workshop, so I'm hoping we can just go ahead with that. We do have everything in place for welcoming in people. Again, Elaine will be cleaning and we will have DPW helping with the sanitizing, so we have that part of it covered. We want our residents to be safe. We want them to be able to enjoy our programs. And we're all set to open up as soon as we get everything, we get the approval tonight and we move forward. So does anybody have any questions about the center?
Inside the building, will it be 100% masks all the time?
That has been a discussion, but yes, I think at this point, I'm gonna say at this point, we'll have masks 100% of the time. Yes.
Well, that, unless they have a breathing problem, but if they have a breathing problem, they really shouldn't be out and
Right.
And be extremely cautious. So I, I would be okay as long as there's masks all the time.
Yes. On everybody, correct.
Are there any special cleaning provisions that need to be made, you know, after an event or something like that, just to keep everybody safe just in case?
Right, we're gonna have the cleaning to the nth degree, but then also the sanitizing that is done at Village Hall. Charles and Joe are committed to having the center to be the same protocol as, as Village Hall. So they will be going in there, if we're there Monday through Thursday, they're gonna go in Monday morning through Friday morning and sanitize everything that needs to be sanitized. So yes, they're gonna, they're gonna keep that protocol going.
So what other cleaning would be done then?
Just the cleaning of the bathrooms, cleaning of the kitchen, cleaning of the floor, anything that needs to be cleaned. We're gonna make everything's wiped down.
Like the chairs and, the chairs and everything? Okay.
The chairs that are used are gonna be wiped down, which we do. Again, we, we're limited equipment out at the gazebo that we've been using. So we're used to cleaning everything after somebody uses it. That will be the, that will continue when we take them inside.
Okay, and, and of course, it'll be the right size group as well. How many, how many people do you have on those?
So the most that we've had, if, and I might be wrong by a number too, the most we've had yoga is about 25. So the number, the top number would be 30, but I don't even think we'll reach that high. And then chair exercises lasts about 15 people. So 30 would be high. I'll say 25 is about the number that we're looking at. And we could-
And, and we've measured all that, right? I think, Ed, you said you measured so that therefore there was enough room for those numbers, correct?
Based on the capacity, based on the capacity of the, of the community center, we would be able to handle 30 people.
Okay, perfect. Okay, perfect.
And we have all the, you know, we have the hand sanitizers, we have the disinfecting, we have the cleaning. Everything's in place. We've been strategizing, Kathy's been strategizing also with DPW. So, and, and the seniors are really looking to get out. They're so appreciative to the board in regards to the yoga, the chair exercise and the events that we've been having that they are looking forward to, all people are looking forward to go, to go inside because now it's getting cold, as Kathy has mentioned.
Right, right.
Yeah, the heat went on the other day. And I have my heat set 64.
I know. We're there. It's October. But again, just even saying as more from what the mayor just said, people are so appreciative for all the programs that we've been doing. So thank you, Board, for letting us continue with that. There, you have a great community and they're really, really appreciative of what we've, what we're all as a group has been doing. So we, we're happy that we can keep continuing that.
Thank you, Kathy, and thank, thank Elaine for all she's doing and Nancy and yourself because you are really keeping a community moving. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Village Board. I appreciate everybody. Thank you.
Oh, and thank you to Walgreens, you know, a special shout out to Walgreens with 175 flu shots
Right.
tomorrow. I can't urge, urge it enough to get a flu shot, you know, with the, with the pandemic and the flu rolling around at the same time.
Yep, I agree.
I got mine. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. Thanks for setting up that-
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night. I'll be here, but I'll be here but muted and mic.
Stay safe.
Thank you.
Okay, Justice Court Judge Ernest Bonacqua.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening to Mayor Markounis and the Board of Trustees of Suffering. It's my pleasure to come before you tonight and describe for you what's happening with the Suffering Justice Court and the steps we're taking to reopen the court. As you know, by order of the Governor and the administrative judges of the state in New York, it was mandatory that the courts close with everything else and such that even we staff and judges were not permitted to come to the courthouse for some time. As the virus progressed and the lockdown continued, however, and progress was made, step by step, we were permitted to begin doing operations again and that included doing arraignments virtually. All the, all the arraignments throughout the county, the county were done by an essential part out of the Supreme Court in the early days. But as we learned the system and got certified, we judges, after, after being certified, were permitted to begin doing virtual arraignments. Until I received certification, the arraignments out of this court were done by the county court judge, but also by Judge, Town Judge David Freed and Spring Valley Justice Dizier. And I'd like to thank those justices particularly for, for helping to cover the Suffering Court calendar during that time. We have taken various protocols, put various protocols into effect with regard to ensuring the safety of the court staff and myself, the officers, but also the public. The small courtroom in which I now sit has been outfitted by our, our able DPW staff with Plexiglas, Plexiglas barriers and measurements have been taken so that a maximum of only eight people are permitted in the courtroom at any one time. Operations for holding court began three weeks ago. We've now are running court on a weekly basis to get caught up. I'd be remiss to talk about the court without saying goodbye to our longtime Justice Court Clerk Christine Anderson. After 30 years, she has decided to take her well-deserved retirement. And we said goodbye to her in September, in last month. And many of you know Christine and know of the great work that she's done for the court over the years and she will be sorely missed. She was, she's known as the best court clerk in the Ninth District and I can attest that that's true. Nevertheless, we must continue on. To that end, Mayor Markounis and I have already begun the search for a new clerk and, and have interviewed at least one applicant who we feel is qualified to take that position and we're, we're we're taking the steps in that regard to fill that position in the near future. I also, of course, want to thank Assistant Court Clerk Anne Rizzo, who is now doing the work of three individuals. She's, she's making it possible for me to hold my court calendars and all the work that goes into that beforehand and afterwards. And I appreciate that very much. The, the court is now holding criminal calendars. We'll be having our vehicle and traffic calendar in the near future. Village Attorney, Village Prosecutor, excuse me, Village Prosecutor Robert Yodowitz is now working on a system of plea by mail for the uncontested vehicle and traffic citations and we hope to have that up and running in the near future. The, the court is, and have, can now hear small claims, landlord tenant issues and, and other civil matters. There are still some prohibited, some things that we can't do such as default judgments and we're not able to other, other take other drastic measures in light of the pandemic with, with regard to tenancy. But as the Governor and the administrative judges allow, we will begin pursuing those those remedies for the public to seek here before the court. We, we just finished our mandatory annual audit that's done of the court books on a yearly basis. And of course, that was, that was completed with the help of Christine and Anne Rizzo and it was done efficiently and by the outside auditor. And I'm happy to be back serving the people of the village. Any questions from me?
No. Can't wait to have you back and congratulations that you can do what you love to do and we thank you for that.
Great, thank you. My pleasure.
Thank, thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
At this time, I would like to open up the meeting to audience participation. If you're in the audience and you would like to speak, please raise your hand, state your name and address.
And Mayor, we're going to remind the speakers that we have a three-minute speaking time in effect, so we'll give you a little signal when 30 seconds is left.
Oh, I thought it was four. It's not four?
Are we going to four?
Yes, four minutes.
Four minutes.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna step off to the side for one second. I just wanna grab a sweater, but it's on the other chair, so I'll be right back.
Okay.
I will remind anybody that has called in through a regular telephone, you have to hit star nine in order to raise your hand. If you're using the app on a smartphone or on a computer, then there's a little icon at the bottom that you can raise your hand, and then we can recognize you. Mayor, I'm seeing, oh, here we go. Joe Hunt, Union President. So I'll ask Joe to unmute.
Good evening, Board. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Clearly.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I want to begin with thanking Mayor Markounis and the Board, Acting Board at this time, for resolving a Purb issue with an employee from 2015. Kudos to you guys for finally putting something to rest. In the interim, I want to state that I am a unit president here at Suffolk. 8369 is my unit. I represent every member of this village that works under my unit. Now, I have two other issues that I want to bring to your attention. One of them is Dakota Ethics, and we're in the works with that with Mr. Glickle. But again, the duration of time and the money spent, and we're going into a COVID era where we don't know if we're gonna have a lot of money coming in. So I basically would like to offer at your convenience to me and try to resolve this Purb case and the Derek DeHazo's Purb case, so we don't spend money. We'll let the lawyers do the final paperwork. If we can sit down and discuss these issues and try to resolve them amongst ourselves. It's showing face to all the taxpayers that we will be able to work together and save this village money. Knowing what we're gonna be looking at, the unknown, none of us can say what's really gonna happen. But the union, this unit is willing to sit down, and I have a lot of trained members that can work with management. And it doesn't have to be me. I do oversee everything. So if you're thinking it's all me, please take that out of your mind. I have people trained to do this, and I would love to show more than I have showed at, you know, sponsoring events and whatnot. The CSCA is here to work with the village and the board and the mayor to try to save every avenue we can to make this village as strong as we can, and at the same time, work together as a team, Team Suffolk. One more thing, I just wanted to let you all know, team means a lot to me. Together, everyone achieves a lot. So if we can work together as a team, we can really put that word out in front and come up with a lot of things. So hopefully you guys will take my words to heart and consider in time, in these times, we need to consider on how we're gonna save, and this is one saving. The lawyers can take our words, put them in legal terminology, and then we can both sign them as a team, working forward to the future Suffolk. Thank you for your time and to listen to me. Again, I'm here to help the village in any way I can as a unit president, and so are my union members, which also live here in the village and pay taxes. So please consider everything I said, and I'll be waiting for a phone call tomorrow or the next day. Have a good evening.
Go Team Suffolk!
Thank you, Joe.
Okay.
Appreciate everything you do, Joe. Mayor, we have Jonathan Abrams. Jonathan, would you just identify your address, please?
600 Mohawk Knowles. I don't know if this is the correct forum. If not, I apologize. Curious about road maintenance. Would that be an issue brought up in this meeting?
Sure.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Memorial Drive, over six months, probably eight, closer to 10, I think, has been a one-way street. It is now officially closed. It is closed due to crumbling into the river. There hasn't been any signs posting, or I haven't heard any reason why it's been closed this long and has not been repaired. Now it is fully closed. Will it ever be repaired?
We were just recently out there with the County of Rockland and the Drainage Agency, and we are getting engineers out there to inspect and identify the appropriate repairs that we may be able to make. It seems like it's going to be a big deal. It's going to be a while, but we need to have the engineering report for guidance.
This has been an ongoing thing. You guys, that's been closed, and that bridge was closed and redone, and that was for almost five years, that bridge was closed coming towards Knowles. And it just seems like it's not a priority. There are a lot of people that live there, and now I'm sure a lot of people on Oak Street, yeah, I believe it's Oak, will not be happy of getting all of that traffic, that now it's gonna be dual. For bidirectional now is gonna be going down that street. And it's a nice cut-around, and I understand it now, it's nice to walk on that without cars coming, because I do that with my child. But it seems like, aside from COVID, it's been overlooked. It's really been unfortunate.
Well, like I said, we are in the middle of, you know, really analyzing the options that we have. We cannot move forward on that until we have definitive plans and funding. It's gonna be a very expensive operation. I hope that helps.
Not really. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, we now have Mr. Scott Shedler. Scott, if you just identify yourself and your address.
Scott Shedler, Forest Sylvan Way, Suffolk. I'm not sure if you can hear me. Yeah, over, I've lived in the village for over 50 years and grew up on Lexington Avenue. And for a long time, I've been advocating for many mayors to actually acquire the property adjacent to Memorial Drive. There's a large tract of land, and I've spoke to many boards, and it's been newspaper several times. Not only myself, but a number of the public have written about it. Now this gentleman in the Knowles is concerned. What I presented was to acquire the property adjacent to Memorial Drive, that's basically a floodplain, and relocate the road, and hopefully, you know, work with the County Sewer Agency, Water, United Water, and Orange and Rockland, and relocating utilities. You know, just want the board to consider that possibility. It's been a different situation. I'm not sure why it wasn't addressed after Floyd, as the road deteriorated, as the gentleman just mentioned from the Knowles. So if the board can consider that, I think it would be a major step forward in relocating that road through that large tract of land and preserving that land as open space. Thank you, Board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else with their hand raised?
Michael, I believe it's Michael Curley. Michael, please identify yourself and your address.
New Suffolk, New York.
Go ahead, Michael.
Okay, I think it's important to get that road open, so when the pool opens next year, we have a way to get there. So I don't know if you people remember, but the pool wasn't open this year. We had to go to Ramapo. So some people did, some people didn't. And Ramapo Pool stayed open the whole year, and so did the Slotesburg Pool stayed open the whole year. So I hope that we make sure we put money in the budget to open the pool and make it safe for the people to get to the pool. That's all. Thank you. Have a nice day.
Thank you.
I guess we could give a few more seconds, Mayor, see if anybody else is on. We have Kathy's iPod. Kathy, please identify yourself and your address.
Hi, this is Catherine, 7 Sussex Court, Suffolk, New York. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
My question is, Michael, when will we be able to know levels that financially the Village of Suffolk is, what's going on with our budget due to the pandemic? That was my question.
Oh, well, actually, I'm preparing a report for the board on the first quarter as it ended. Of course, we had to wait for a few things to come in. And essentially, what we're most concerned about are the revenue side of things, how they are affected. Things like sales tax, mortgage tax, those are the main two things. But of course, we have things like fines and forfeitures, as you just heard from the judge. The court has been essentially closed for a while, so that's gonna be significant. Likewise, with parking revenues and permits. So that's going to be coming very shortly, probably within the next five to seven days.
Okay, that's my only question that I have. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Okay, Mayor, I see no more hands.
Okay, we'll close the audience participation, and we'll move right on to you, Mr. Janito, as the Treasurers report.
Yes, Mayor. Well, we have a few things to report. One of them, of course, is that the audit, as the judge had mentioned, was completed for the Justice Court. And that was done by the same auditors that are doing the village audit, and that is in its final stages. They're now preparing the financials. And we should have a presentation for the board in December, probably publishing the statements in November. Along with that, we have some other major things happening. We have the Environmental Facilities Corporation is issuing the 2020 bonds. We're preparing for that to be done. We are also doing some short-term financing with our bond anticipation notes, renewing those. We will also have the Governor's Office of Storm Recovery. I believe that's a little later on the menu here on the agenda, I should say. But the bottom line is that that particular process is underway. That involves $600,000 worth of state grants that are associated with the replacement of generators, key generators in the village, and also about $2 million for the hardening of our water plant and its wells, in order to protect the wells. So that's essentially what we have going. Now, we have two resolutions before the board today. And one of them is to establish a capital project known as Project 2021-002, and that's for a garbage truck with plow. Again, I believe Charles Sookie will be talking about that a little later on, but the amount is $245,000. It would be a project financed currently by debt. So we are asking the board to adopt that resolution to establish that capital project.
Well, I do have the resolution here. Might as well run it through now. Authorizing, authorization to establish capital project 2021-002, 2021 garbage truck with plow. Whereas the Superintendent of Public Works has requested the purchase of a new garbage truck with plow, and whereas the Village Treasurer has determined that the total cost of the garbage truck with plow and associated financing cost is estimated to be $245,000. Now therefore be resolved that the Village Board of the Village of Suffolk establishes Project 2021-002, 2021 garbage truck with plow in the amount of $245,000 to be financed by debt. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert, do I have a second?
Second, Trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Mayor, the second resolution is related to the first one in that, since the project is being financed by debt, we have to issue a bond or adopt a bond resolution in the amount of $245,000 for the purchase of the garbage truck with the plow. This particular resolution, being a bond resolution, will require four affirmative votes of the mayor and Board of Trustees. It also will have, in addition to a 20-day estoppel period, a 30-day permissive referendum period. I just explained that the 30-day permissive referendum period starts upon the adoption of the resolution, that is, that would be tonight. And then, following that 30-day referendum period, if no one submits a petition, having 10% of the signatures of the registered voters of the village against it, then it would go into an estoppel period once an ad is placed in the Journal News. And that would follow a 20-day, so they're consecutive. In other words, the actual garbage truck with plow could not be purchased until 50 days from tonight at the minimum. And again, it requires four affirmative votes. You do have the resolution before you. I believe it's a rather lengthy resolution, so you may just want to note it for the record and get the roll call vote on that particular resolution. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So I have the resolution, the bond resolution of the Village of Suffolk, New York, adopted October 5, 2020, authorizing the issuance of bonds in the principal amount not to exceed $245,000 to finance the acquisition of a garbage truck with plow, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof is $245,000 and appropriating said amount for such purpose. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second, Barone.
Barone. I'm gonna take a roll call vote. Trustee Corrigan?
Yes.
Trustee Albert?
Yes.
Trustee Barone?
Yes.
Trustee Gerard?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Ed, you agree with that decision, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. It's just not fair that you don't get to vote because there's four of us and one of you, so I thought, you know, you should be able to say yes, too.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Mayor, that's all we have. Thank you very much, Board.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. Department of Public Works, Mr. Zawicki, please.
Charles, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Good evening, Board. I'd like to provide the Board an update. The Wayne Avenue project will commence at the end of October with a projected completion of mid-December. Memorial Drive, as it's come up earlier in the meeting, from Orchard Street to Utopian Avenue will be closed until further notice as a result of significant additional soil erosion along the riverbank. Now, that was something that, over the last couple of rain events, really did some significant additional damage to the roadway. And as the mayor had mentioned earlier, met with the Rockland County Drainage Agency, we reached out to the Rockland County Source Authority, District 1. They have a forest main running down that road close to the, really close to the river. And we really need to be able to put together some type of plan, which unfortunately will be very, very expensive. So that's, you know, being able to get some type of grant. And as we all know, the grants are difficult to get and take a long time. But that would probably be our best, best option here is to be able to get some type of grant and be able to move forward with some type of remediation. Is there any questions in regard to Memorial Drive?
What kind of timeframe do you think we'd be talking, just to give an idea to the residents?
It's very hard to project, but, you know, it's not going to be, it's not going to be a quick fix. And I would say we're probably looking at a good part of a year before we can get some real determination on what we can do in terms of finance and, and actually the actual remediation of the roadwork.
It's not only the roadwork, also involves the DEC and the river and trying to stabilize the entire, not the entire length, but a majority of the length of the riverbed that runs alongside Memorial Drive. Actually, I spoke to someone in the county and they were actually indicating that it's possible that we may even need to divert the river to be able to get the construction vehicles into that location to rebuild. It's going to be a lengthy process.
Yeah, I agree, for sure. Okay, so moving to the item B, we'd request the mayor to appoint Michael Augustine to maintenance helper to the Water, Water and Soil Department effective October 5, 2020.
We have the resolution appointing Michael Augustine as maintenance helper effective October 5, 2020. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Corrigan Barone.
Trustee Barone, do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah.
Trustee Corrigan, all on the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes.
Okay. All right, the item C, I got to first off, start off, I apologize for the enormous confusion in regards to this Dewberry proposal. I did talk with Lori DeBorne this morning, spoke with Rob Magrino. Rob, I believe, also spoke with Lori. So we do have it squared away in terms of what is necessary. The RFP for the 119796 funding would be, would come from the GOSHER grant fund. It would not cost the village any monies. And that addresses the bidding assistance. I'm sorry, it addresses the construction administration, construction field work, post-construction deliverables. And there's a survey, asbestos and lead sampling, so on, so forth, along with modifying the existing drawings to conform with the WICS law, which grates out the drawings to various disciplines. So Rob has prepared a lengthy resolution. I'm hoping that everyone has that in front of them. And one other item that I want to bring up is the fact that, again, there was some confusion on my part early on that there will be an RFP required for what is going to be characterized as bidding assistance, construction management and inspection services. And I did receive that RFP, at least a template, from Lori today. So, you know, we would have to, you know, refine that and, you know, actually get that, put that out for, for proposal from various engineering firms in the area.
Okay.
Yeah, Mayor, if I could just jump in, I just want to make sure you have the correct resolution. It was the one I sent late this afternoon. Just to follow up on what Charles is saying, this is authorizing the village to engage Dewberry as engineers for the purposes of what Charles laid out. This originally was done through DASNY. The project is no longer with DASNY, the Dormitory Authority of State of New York. It's with GOSHER, which is the Governor's Office of Storm Recovery. According to Lori DeBorne, who is with GOSHER, as Charles mentioned, any of the funding, the money that you're authorizing tonight, or the agreement you're authorizing tonight, will be paid for through the community development block grants that were previously approved. So it's not something that the village will be spending any money on, but it is, it's something that needs to be done to kind of authorize the work to be done. They're getting everything ready to go so that the village can go for an RFP, the actual work, as Charles mentioned. So I just wanted to look it up. If anybody had any questions on certain questions.
No, and it's also a time short line to get this project done.
Right, we're, and the second, the resolution I said this afternoon kind of cleaned it up a little bit. It also indicates subject to further discussion with Dewberry and GOSHER because they're going to do an audit, if you will, on the numbers. So I made it so that no more than the figures that are put in that September 21 letter.
Perfect. Thank you.
So I have the resolution, whereas Dewberry Engineers propose to supply the Village of Suffolk professional engineering services, services associated with the reconstruction of potable water wells, number two and four, and installation of emergency standby generators at the Department of Public Works Garage and Village Hall. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan, do I have a second?
Second, Trustee Alpert.
Trustee Alpert, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion passed.
Let's get this project done.
Okay, is there any, any other questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to remind, I brought it up at the workshop, but with Mr. Augustine switching over from the DPW over to the Water Department, that, that leaves a third vacancy at, over at the DPW. These, these are funded positions that, that are just, haven't been filled as people left. So I wanted...
Yes, we're, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So I just wanted to bring that, you know, remind and keep that on the forefront that, you know, the DPW is short workers.
Absolutely. It is a high priority where we have interviewed at least one individual. We will continue to see which candidates will, you know, that will be able to fit the position. And we will certainly give our best effort to try to fill those positions as soon as possible.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Magrino.
Okay, the first resolution was put on, and we received a letter from the County Department of Health asking to designate Community Center making available hopefully an eventual vaccine, the mass dispensing of a vaccine upon the declaration of a state emergency for a purpose. The only thing I would add to the resolution is to indicate upon approval of the village attorney's office. I reached out to the County Executive's Office, I spoke with Representative today. I just wanted some further detail because the letter is about two lines, there's really not much detail. I'm not sure, you know, statistically, the community center is the best spot. I'm sure everybody wants to find a place where mass vaccinations could take place or rapidly and efficiently and safely. But frankly, until, you know, the village weighs in, including, you know, Charles, DPW, the Police Department, I don't know that the community center is necessarily the right place. There may be better places, there may be private locations that are better. Larger parking lots, I don't know if it's going to be a mobile situation with people coming in in cars. So, you know, again, Bill of Suffolk doesn't want to be, on record, is not supporting vaccine, but I do think we need a few more details. So we'll table it going forward tonight, if you say, upon the attorney's office, you know, just to make sure that we have all the detail we had signing that.
Okay. So I have the resolution authorizing the Village of Suffolk Community Center to be made available for use in the event of a public emergency communicable disease declaration. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Trustee Alpert.
Alpert, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Barone, on the discussion?
We're going to make sure that Rob's requirements are in that resolution, right? I know we got it, but we're definitely going to do that, right?
Well, in the letter, I mean, you know, before it's signed, I want to speak to, you know, the county and make sure, you know,
Yes.
what they're looking for and what they, according to the village, if anything.
Perfect. Thank you, Rob.
That the community center fits the bill. If it does, and it does, if it doesn't, you know, like you said, if there's going to be hundreds of people or hundreds of cars or whatever it may be, let's get some further clarification on it.
Yes.
Right, there may be, you know, I'm thinking here and elsewhere, there may be larger, like I said, just in discussions with other folks, you know, larger parking areas that may be made available might be more suitable for something like that.
I...
But we'll discuss that with them.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Magrino.
Okay, the second one is to amend Resolution 122 of, this is of 2020, to extend the outdoor dining permission that the board granted. Says to November 30th, if you want to consider December 31, I don't know. At least November 30th gives you a couple of board meetings to think about.
Yes, okay, so I have the resolution, amending Resolution 122 of 2020, authorizing modifications to the Village of Suffolk Table and Chairs Program to assist local restaurants reopen in accordance with the New York State Executive Orders issued by the Governor of the State of New York to allow for the program to continue through November 30, 2020. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Alpert.
Trustee Alpert, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Corrigan, any further discussion?
I have a question about a pending snowstorm. Is there the mechanism to have this all removed quickly?
Yeah, in the resolution there is, but I would defer to DPW on the practical aspects of that. If Charles or Joe can weigh in.
So in, in number two, in the resolution, in the event of snow or other weather-related emergencies, restaurants are required to remove outdoor tables and chairs upon notification by the mayor or his designee. So as soon as we hear of an event that may be happening, we just issue that notification and we clear the, the road.
Very good.
And like we talked about at the workshop, we're going to have specific guidelines on the use of heaters and...
The use of outdoor heating equipment is subject to approval by the Village Fire Inspector.
Perfect.
Yes, and he'll be, he'll be making his rounds this week.
Great.
Okay, and then, I'm sorry, was there a vote on it?
No, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? No, okay, thank you.
Then I did email the board with regarding a litigation matter. If the board had an opportunity to review that and is prepared to vote, I have a resolution prepared regarding the stipulation on the Covenant Holdings matter to regard the alleyway.
I got it.
Yes.
I don't have the reso.
I have, I have one here, I think I emailed it to you earlier.
Okay, if you would read it to the...
Right, so just as a little background, as the board's aware, the, there's a dispute over an alley on Washington Avenue between Covenant Holdings and Ford Gion. The village was named, really as a necessary party because there may have been a claim that the village could have made, which it did in its answer. We've been presented outside counsel on this. And after review of title reports, this has gone on for a couple of years now, and reviewing with the board, it was determined that the board would not pursue any right or claim of right to ownership or easement in the alleyway. And I believe the two owners, it's actually owned by deed, by a trust, which is now... You know, at this point, based upon where it is and the conditions, it was felt that there was no reason for the village to pursue a claim to it and hopefully the owners can work out some type of arrangement as between them. So resolution would be, whereas the Village of Suffolk was named a party in an action in Rockland County Supreme Court, it was Covenant Holdings versus Ford Gion of Village of Suffolk, Rockland County Index 31499 of 2018, which is an action pursuant to real property proceedings law 15 to establish an ownership, to establish a certain, it's a certain alleyway off of Washington Avenue. Whereupon the proof submitted, the Village of Suffolk is determined it is not in the best interest of the Village of Suffolk to pursue any claims respect ownership of the alley. Parties to the action have agreed to discontinue any claims or cause of action against the Village of Suffolk. Now therefore be resolved, the village board hereby authorizes execution of stipulation continuance, any claims brought against and by the Village of Suffolk. The action known as Covenant Holdings versus Ford Gion of Village of Suffolk, index number, and the council for the village is authorized to execute said stipulation of discontinuance and any other necessary documents to actuate the purposes of this resolution. So I'd ask for a motion on that.
Motion, Trustee Barone.
Do I have a second?
Second, Trustee Alpert.
Trustee Alpert, any further discussion?
Yeah, I do have a question. Since the village is not claiming any ownership, is this, does this essentially, does, is this parcel on the tax roll and is it a taxable piece?
It could be, I mean, it's, it's, like I said, the ownership, those lots, there's a big, there's a history to it, which I'm going to get into tonight, but those lots were all in one ownership. And then they were deeded out over time. The trust never deeded this particular alleyway out. So we'll have to see what happens with the terms of ownership, you know, through the court process. The court's going to have to basically declare, make a declaration where the parties agree, and then we'll deal with that.
Right, so, so in theory, though, this should, once that's all settled, once that other lawsuit's settled, this should fall onto one or the other party's taxable property, I would think.
I'll say could, because it will, it may be only an easement, you know. Again, there's very, very complicated ownership issues. Funk Trust owns. So if one of them takes it, perhaps.
Yeah.
I wish I could be more committal.
I understand, I just want to make sure that it's looked into, that's all.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Magrino. Trustees, trustees update, we're getting there.
I have something I'd like to ask. There's two-hour parking on Lafayette on the second half. The owner of the Suffolk Food Mart asked me if we could put a 15-minute parking spot in that area. He indicated to me that there's always cars parked and his customers have trouble parking and coming in. I've driven by it several times to check it myself, and I agree with him. It would be helpful if there was a 15-minute spot there.
That's down at the lower end?
The lower end, in front of Suffolk Food Mart. There's no 15-minute spots there. There seem to be spread out pretty good around the village, but lacking down there.
I think there's one on the corner. Okay, we'll take a look at that.
Thank you.
Well, that's something that has to be finished, right? We did that whole parking study that was underway and it...
Yeah.
It got, you know, tabled, but probably needs to be...
It got COVIDed.
Yeah.
Okay, we got to continue that, you're right.
I, I had a few things. I don't believe Charles Souk is still on here, it doesn't look like it. Okay, I'll follow up with Charles in the morning, but regarding, he drafted, just to update the public, he had drafted a... just to update the public, he had drafted a an RFP on the wastewater, the management of the wastewater treatment plant. And we've got the mayor, myself, and we've, we've asked Robert Flores to help us out on that for Delaware Engineering, so we did have a meeting a couple of weeks ago. I'll, I, I think it looks pretty good, I really wanted to know if, if Charles had heard anything from Robert, any feedback. But just for the, for the purposes of updating everyone else, I mean, this is, this is the largest third-party contract we have in the village, so we're trying to take advantage of the opportunity to reevaluate the services we're getting, see if we can you know, align them more with, you know, we've built some capability in the, in the internal staffing at the wastewater treatment plant, so we're reevaluating our needs from third parties and it's a good opportunity to, to reduce the cost on this, so. But I'll, I'll get back to Charles and my questions on that, so that was just an update. I had a there was something that was sent out recently from Mr. Janito regarding the approval of the invoices from the labor attorney, Mr. Glickel, who I know Mr. Glickel is on. Question for Mr. Glickel, what, what in your view is, is adequate timing in terms of once you submit your invoice, in terms of getting paid by the village? Is he still on?
Okay, he's on now.
Richard, could you unmute yourself, I just want to, the reason I'm asking is, I know currently we have a process where the board gets an opportunity to review the invoice, and I want to make sure that we're reviewing that in a timely manner. But I, I do still think it's important that the entire board gets an opportunity to review that, so I just wanted to make sure that we meet appropriate timing for you.
No, you have been, under the retainer agreement. The money is in escrow. And the bill is paid absent objection within 30 days.
Okay. Okay, so we'll just have to make sure that, I mean, I think we've, I, I believe we've been meeting that obligation.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, trustee Gerard, if I may, Michael here. Yeah, just a quick one, the issue is, when we have the invoice come in from, from Richard, I send that out to the entire village board immediately and ask for a response after review, and certainly you can understand a day or two to review it. But in some cases, it's been five days before I hear, and then I, I have to follow up on that, of course, unless, and if I happen to forget and I don't have three people saying yes, go ahead and pay it. That's where it could be a delay, Richard is right, we, it's been very timely because we have had and we have increased the retainer enough to allow for a full month's worth of normal outside council fees to be paid. But I just want to make sure it doesn't run into a problem.
Yeah, no, I agree, you, you shouldn't have to be, you know, hand-holding everybody either, so. Maybe it's just to, to stress the point to all of us to, to make sure we, we respond to that timely. And, and ask any questions timely as well, if we, if there's any, you know, further questions on the invoice, so.
Mayor, just a quick note, I see that Charles Sawicki is back online, I'm going to, he wanted to say something, so Charles, you should be able to unmute yourself at this point.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I'm sorry, was there a question?
Yeah, Charles, I, I just, I, I was bringing everybody up to date on the, the status of managing the wastewater treatment plant, and I mentioned the RFP that you had drafted. I, I thought it looked pretty good, I just wasn't sure if you had received any feedback from Mr. Flores from Delaware Engineering yet.
No, actually, I was, gave some thought to that today. I have not, I will definitely reach out to him tomorrow and see if he has any comments.
Okay.
Also in regards, and I believe that we should look at, looking at the cost analysis in between, between JCO, the current operators of record, the wastewater treatment plant, and the actual cost of, of if we had two village employee operators. Just to see what the analysis is, what's the cost difference between them, and then the recommendations from Delaware Engineering and how that would apply into our operation and the operators we have currently at the plant.
Yeah, makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then lastly, just a point, I made this before, but ratifying the minutes of these meetings, I'm coming up on a two-years term, and we have yet to do that. I, I want to stress to the village clerk, Amy. I, I think that's normal practice, that we need to ratify the minutes of the meetings on a regular basis, or is that not true?
That, I think, Rob, Mr. Magrino could answer, but I don't believe that the, we accept the meetings, the, the minutes.
Right, oftentimes, you know, minutes are accepted from previous meetings, but I don't know that that's a regular practice, frankly.
I thought it has.
Sorry?
I thought it, it has been with from what I recall, for
Yeah.
in our village board meetings that we've you know, that, that, you know, we might ratify them two or three months later from, from that meeting, but we get an opportunity to go through the minutes and make sure that they're accurately represent what the meeting said.
Are they the village clerk's minutes and they're ratified, or does the board have to accept them?
Well, when I was on the board the last time.
I'm just asking for the requirement, what is the requirement by law?
Joe, you can.
Oh, I so when I was on the board the last time, whether it be right, wrong, or indifferent, you know, we would always get the minutes, maybe a month, maybe two months after, depending on the timeline. And we'd all have the opportunity to review them and then agree with them at the next board meeting, and they would be voted on. Now, I don't know if that's like something that doesn't happen in today's world, but
No, well.
I was on the board for quite some time and it happened every meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, Joe, it's not unusual, what you're saying is probably true. For the first agenda item on the minutes of well, the first agenda item on your meeting is usually adopting the minutes from the last meeting. Whether or not you'll be able to do that the following month or two months later, but most commonly, we see that at the next regular meeting. The problem in a COVID world, and I have discussed this with the village clerk, is that the executive order, which was issued very early on by the governor with regard to these virtual meetings, is that the requirement is for verbatim minutes, which is, think about it. You don't have a stenographer. You do have a videotape. For those minutes to be transcribed, now there, there are, from what I understand, computer software that will allow you to do that, if you want to purchase the software, you'd have to take that up with your IT people. But what you do have is the video. And assuming that that video hasn't been tampered with, which I highly doubt, anyone can go to the video and obtain the verbatim, actually see what was said at the meeting and by who. But technically, and, and the executive order has not been modified or amended over these six, some odd months. The requirement is for verbatim minutes, which would have you sitting and reading, in essence, a transcript of every word that was said at the meeting.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with you wholeheartedly, but I think, Paul, and totally correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this had to do with past practice, non-COVID related.
Yeah, and, and to my knowledge, I mean, and I can't see Amy on the screen, I know she's with you, mayor, but she does prepare minutes, does she not? I realize they're not verbatim, but there are minutes summarizing the meeting, aren't there?
Yes, and they're posted within two, within two weeks, within two weeks to the website.
Okay, so, so wouldn't there be, there has been a process, like Joe said, pre-COVID, where we've gone and and ratified those minutes, or whatever the proper terminology is.
Right, but I think I, I think Richard's point was that they're required for verbatim minutes only, or?
No, that's, that's not the point. The point is, and correct me, Paul, if I'm wrong, but after COVID, to ensure that the board is actually seeing the minutes to make sure that we agree with them, which should have been being done prior to COVID, before they were posted to the public.
No, it's not. It's not, no, 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 it's not a question of them before they're being posted. The idea is that the minutes exist for you to review and adopt the minutes.
But we haven't reviewed any minutes in two years.
Well, they're on your website.
Well.
Right, I think they're asking that, should the board be, have a resolution at a subsequent meeting, adopting them?
Adopting the minutes that were posted, okay, so we'll look into that and we'll adopt the minutes that were posted, correct? Is that correct?
Yeah, as a, as a regular practice, the meetings, and whatever is the appropriate lag time, whether it's one meeting or two.
Right, agreed, okay.
Okay, thank you, that's all I got, sorry.
Are the, are the minutes in draft form or as published on the website? Like a published in draft form, or are they published as the village clerk's minutes? Within the two-week period, right? That's for either Mr. Magrino or Mr. Glickel.
Well, if, if you're publishing them as draft, you should publish them as draft, subject to adoption by the board.
Perfect. Perfect. Right, that's okay.
Okay, thanks.
We'll adopt them, we'll, we'll put that into practice, where we adopt the draft minutes and ratify them a meeting or two after.
Okay, thank you.
I will, we'll, we'll continue to discuss it, that.
I'll supply them, I know they're on the website, but supply them by email to the board, that way we can review them ahead of, ahead of adopting them or approving them.
Right, okay, we'll, we'll continue this discussion, absolutely.
Who's next? I, I have something for Charles, if I, if I may go. Charles, you're still there, right? He's muted.
Charles, you can unmute yourself.
I just want to make sure he'll be able to. Okay, there we go, so Charles, I know, a few weeks ago, I believe you mentioned that there would finally be a sign put back on Maplewood, at the, at the line between Mawa and Suffering, which a lot of residents have been asking me, because I live in that neighborhood. And ironically, I apologize, because I didn't check today, but it was about a week ago, there was no sign there, so I was just curious if you can give us a timeline, now that everything's sort of ready for that.
Well, I will, yeah, we did talk about getting that done the following week, I think, the, one of the last meetings. We'll definitely get that as soon as possible, I will get together and, and, you know, make sure we got a work order to get expedited as soon as possible.
All right, just because I, I have several neighbors that have been asking me about it, they've been poking me about it.
Doing the best. Yeah, understood, yeah, understood.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Can we move on, or? Okay. I have, I have a resolution here, appointing Jonathan Turco as a sewer rent appeals board member for a three-year term of office. There was a sewer rent opening, and Mr. Turco graciously accepted the, replied actually, for the appointment. And I have the resolution here, do I have a motion?
Motion, trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert, do I have a second?
Second trustee Corrigan.
Second trustee Corrigan, on the discussion. I'd like to thank Jonathan Turco for taking the opportunity to serve the village in its capacity, and we look forward to working with you. Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Congratulations, Mr. Turco, you are now a member of the sewer rent appeals board, thank you.
So I saw him listed before, I'm not sure if he's still on.
I don't know. Said he was. Okay, next resolution I have is authorizing an adjustment in pay for Steve Conley to reflect his change of status to department head for the building department. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Corrigan.
Motion trustee Corrigan, do I have a second?
Second.
Second trustee Gerard, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the regular meeting and enter into an executive session. Personnel.
They just have to give the reason for the executive session.
Yes, for personnel matters, thank you.
And will be, will we be coming back to this one to close the meeting, or?
Yes, we will be re-entering the regular meeting.
Why, do we need to vote on something?
No, but that's the, the recommended procedure.
Oh, okay, all right, that's different, okay.
Okay, so who made the motion, I'm sorry?
I don't think anyone did yet. Trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert, do I have a second?
Second trustee Barone.
Trustee Gerard, all in favor?
Aye.
Hey, just give me a couple of minutes, because I have to go downstairs into my office and log back in. Okay, welcome back. We have, I'd like a motion to close the meeting.
Motion, trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert, second by?
Trustee Barone.
Albert and Barone, okay, thank you very much, have a good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.